The Sagatuck City Council meeting for September twenty fifth. And I could stand for the public. I can have it clear, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Here. And if I could have a motion to approve Mayor Dean's absence for tonight?
Motion to approve Mayor Dean's absence.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Close. Alright, so on to Mayor's comments. Obviously Scott is not here tonight. He is getting advanced first aid training as part of being a part of ski patrol. Bittersweet, which is pretty fantastic and honorable, but also a really fun, you know, thing to do in the winter here. And I also wanted to just make an announcement that all last week I was gone for three days and I was on three different Zoom calls for city meetings. I could not hear very well at all. So tonight, if any of our speakers get up there, especially at that, at the podium, if you could speak right into the microphone and any of our council members, anyone, please just speak pretty loud and clear into the microphone. I know this one pops a lot. But you know, the more loud and clear that you speak, people can hear at home a whole lot better. So with that, the city managers' comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to compliment our Department of Public Works. Thank you. You know, I've received so many compliments about the way the city works and sometimes that just goes under the radar. But the landscape's looking good, trash, bathrooms, so big, big, big compliment. Otherwise, my report is on page seven.
Does anybody have any questions for the city manager? Any agenda changes?
Madam Mayor, we do have a guest here and I don't know if you want to come?
Sure. Could I have a motion to approve our county commissioner, Dean Capicca, to speak as a guest speaker?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for our county commissioner, Dean Capicca, to speak as a guest.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, close. Alright, so Dean, if you could come to the podium?
I would just add, I think, with your comments, people have become quite a dick. I would be sad if they're like, there's people all over the place, but it's like, I'm trying to come. I mean, it is so themed and sharp and fun. I can't see much about the city. You gotta think about what you're supposed to be doing. We have many things that are going on in the county. I just ask your prayers for that deputy. You got a lot of ICU this past week. It was pretty difficult. That's another big deal. And I think everyone knows the whole issue of Matt Keviak. He got appointed for the stretchship. And if you don't know Matt, he managed integrity. His wife, Lance Sylvia's wife, you know, that's her. She was a woman back in that event. And I think what I would attest to, went through the, it was small then, but there's lots of those structures. And people there, just because of what he poured into Matt. There are a lot of people. Also, we have our construction documents for Arts in the North project. We need another ticket courtroom by June. And we have that going. Also, we have obviously about our space issues at the courthouse. Thursday, we're doing a whole thing on low income housing. We're meeting with Mark Witty from Montreux. Jeff Shum, he is our consultant looking into it. And then Steph Mekel, Ben from Healthy Foundation, are giving the county the swing at me. The thought of it, that it's everything boxes, I think it's that it's completely healthy. And that's what we're just looking at, what we're doing through saying we don't have. Also, I think we're a focus international on that World Green. We just agreed to a seventy-five percent contract. World Green is simply a broker for electricity. So focus international agreed to, they'll agree by seventy-five percent of the group gave from Michigan. And thirty-five percent of the group. And now, they're like, they're agreed to a hundred fifty by toilet. Now, it's sort of. It's like the government, the government has a, I think, I think they've got a team for Alabot. They've got, higher than sixty-seven people. There's running two hundred people to beat me up here. Then goes back to, I think, about a hundred, a hundred fifty people that we have within this, and other. But I think the city picked that people, they asked people, they were assuming that this was. Also, I don't know, do you know Jennifer Garcia? So Jennifer, I'm going to see her later.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. See, there's the guy, see, I was part of, and now he's part of helping senior citizens. She has a great vision for, for helping people. It's helping, helping senior, helping to give them help in the whole program.
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Gregory.
Yeah, first of all, you know, you gave us great compliments to our downtown area and I am actually excited to see the completion of Allegan, the city downtown Allegan, the completion there. You guys are busy there right now. I'm also excited to see the new up and coming renovations for the courthouse and the services where. We had Jennifer Ludwig on. She's the chief executor of finances there and she was on the show on ninety-two seven, the band this Sunday. And so we talked a little bit about that. And we also had Sarah Ryder on the show as well for the Allegan County Community Foundation. I want to thank you for working with them. They told me about the three hundred page report that they'd just gotten and certainly affordable housing is something that we hear about all around the country. And I want to thank you for, for working on that.
I forgot to mention one other thing. We called in Julie Andrews, just to help us work on the South Shore project. And the fact that actually one of the world with the buses, because we have two hundred buses that are in a danger area as far as the foot would go. And I think we remember some of the history of that going on. So we hired Michigan State to actively serve the, the areas. They remained going up within the wet. And they can really look at the texture of the sand beneath the, the stream, the, the smell. But they've made, they've found this footage of they, they've got two different towns within.
That's like, like, for between Campbell and La Cia?
And now the county members are, they're activated from, from our road commissioning. They think they may talk to Congress, but they think that. There's too many of the kids to be able to.
What's the option to make that a pedestrian trail on?
After that, I just have to, I have to, I have to, and they have to learn the game of the other team. We have a couple of deputies that are holding out. I've been looking for months as far as how to say, you know, impacted. So Julie, we're very susceptible to all that. We've not engaged the rocket too. Two weeks ago, we had blown in a separate pump shop that was, it was like, kind of, so what you need to do, you see things with the act, they're, they're, they're.
I have a question, I have a question like that. The affordable housing meeting that you had, is that open to the public?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us some details on that? Okay, thank you.
You make sure we all get it too. Thank you.
Yeah, good to see you, Dean. The, that South Shore project, that to me is just, I have a lot, I have a lot of passion for that. And one of the, unfortunately, few people in the room that can remember, a figure that can remember when you could actually drive all the way down. And when it was lost for reasons that you had to pull over. The fact that the county is even looking at trying to, trying to put that back, absolutely wonderful. You know, whatever I can do as a city council member or as a citizen, bike rider, whatever, to encourage that, to continue. I know it's going to be a big project. But I've actually noticed back in there with my bike, which I forgot, can I get around? It's somehow about, that's that thing I can't, but love to do it.
I think that's going to be a good topic to speak to after the discussion.
Are they pushing for a fire lane or is it a bike trailer, is it actually? So open to the public?
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, we're on to public comment on agenda items only. Anybody in the room? Alright, anybody on Zoom, sir? Do you see anybody with a hand raised? Nobody on Zoom today? Well, then don't worry about speaking up. But on the recording, if anybody wants to listen to the recording, please continue to speak up. Okay. So on to the consent agenda. If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda from the regular city council meeting minutes from September eleventh?
Move for approval, regular city council meeting minutes, September eleventh, twenty twenty.
This is a roll call? You want to call the roll?
It was Helen or myself, you may pick one. It was an even tide.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Alright, on to staff reports. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As mentioned, my report is on page seven. I do appreciate the council's time, three hours in the workshop on Wednesday. We went through a lot, so I do, I do appreciate that. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions? Alright.
Observation real quick, I appreciate the links.
Great. Alright, on to the treasurer's report is. There's Peter. You were behind the podium. I didn't see you, Peter.
No, I don't have anything to add. Taxes are passed too. Hopefully, there's a few people out there. I sent out notices for next Monday and some people were maybe a shock that, oh, this is still sitting on my desk.
See, yeah.
Everybody feels so embarrassed. Don't be embarrassed. It's happening.
Okay.
Good thing. Now, there's a penalty for you being different.
Anybody have any questions for Peter? Alright, thank you so much. On to Ryan, planning and zoning?
We'll touch on the short-term rental task force in a second, so I'll hold off on that. But happy to answer any questions.
The only question I had, unless anybody wants to go first. So I love going through your reports. I don't know, it's just fascinating to me how much you deal with. And also I learn a lot from your reports. There was, on page thirteen, you referenced issuing a civil infraction for somebody that had a short-term rental. They, you know, didn't have their, you know, application. They, you know, kind of flying under the radar and had a couple of other things. What is this civil infraction? Is it a, is there a cost for that? What, and what is the cost?
There is. So it depends on the type of civil infraction, but for a zoning violation, it's a hundred dollars for a per two. Second offense goes up there, third offense could be.
Keep your license.
Something that I think your short-term rental task force probably is recommended that you take a look at.
Definitely, definitely. That was the only question I had. Does anybody else have any questions for Ryan?
I would just echo your comments that the report is comprehensive and well done and it's really easy to follow. And I, I just like knowing what's going on if I'm approached. So I said it before, I'll say it again, thank you very much. And I think it's good for the constituents to know that you're on top of things and I think, I think it's really helpful for more than just what you see in this room, I think, for people to know that, that cities on top of things.
I know others are reading them.
It's great. Yeah, it's great. Okay, thank you, Ryan. I'm sure we'll hear from you again. Department of Public Works, DPW, Cody? Anybody have any questions for Cody? Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, on to the police report. Do we have anybody here from the sheriff's department? Okay, on to the engineers' report. John Moxie here? Alright, on to boards, commissions and committees. Fire District Administration Board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello?
Hi.
Hey. I, I watched part of the short-term rental, no, planning commission today, this afternoon. But that had the same problem, at least at the very beginning. You couldn't hear anybody. And then at some point it kicked down. I don't know, I don't know why. Okay, this is short.
Okay.
Less of a short, less of a mission. For reports for the, the meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three of the Fire District Administrative Board. As I say, it was a short meeting, five quick notes. Number one, the Michigan Department of Treasury grant was received by the Fire District for ten thousand dollars to cover the cost of a term imager with the many devices that will play hotspots without getting to walk into those. Chad Brink, one of the staff, proceeds certification of the medical responder. Every one of those helps with the nature of recruiting employees for this division, which is very tough. Third, the sale of the fireball, which I think I mentioned last time. The one that sunk, that's been completed with the proceeds of about thirty-four thousand dollars, which were forwarded, those, that money forwarded to M and R and A, which is the, they collect, whatever you call it, which had covered the full cost of the, of the, you know, the district. Foster recovery, a cost recovery payment of twenty-six hundred dollars was received related to one of the two, the smaller, the two dangerous fires from some time back, for mutual, mutual aid support funded by the Fire District. And following required annual inspection of twenty-one fifty-one, which is the standard fighter platform, whatever, trucked by the Michigan Department of Transportation, which is required annually, be needed, but unplan for repair to the ladder mechanism was made at a cost of sixteen thousand dollars. Unplanned for, and that's obviously necessary, that vehicle. Anyway, if you have any questions, feel free. As always, the full video links for all the meetings are on the website. So this is much of any of these online at the fire board link. Our next meeting is October twentieth at four o'clock, as always. They and you, I will.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody have any questions for Dan? Nope, great. Thank you so much. Alright, inner urban board, Gregory?
Sure. We're eleven months into our fiscal year and we're still operating below our budget. The year, with the year-to-date expenses at eighty-three point, or eighty-seven point three percent of the budget. Our revenues show an increase from last year from federal income as well as our, as well as our fireboxes as well. Our cash position higher than last year by two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And so, you know, I told you, we had a little, a little windfall of about sixty thousand dollars and, and so, our director, Phyllis Ives, has decided with the, with the approximate sixty thousand additional state funding coming two thousand twenty-four, she proposed about fifteen K for an extra two percent of staff increase. We had expected to increase our staff by about four percent. She reached out to Sagatuck, Sagatuck Township and Douglas to find out what increases were. We did give our employees a seven percent increase last year. So instead of a four percent, we're going to give them a six percent cost of living increase to their wages. And then she also opted five K to extend hours from four PM to seven PM on Sundays, starting in March instead of May. So that'll give us a couple of extra hours on the road and then also money for new office furniture as well. Any monies left over, we'd be interested in purchasing an AED for the office. So we thought, you know, we, we're trying to, like, we got some extra money. Everybody can have some. So there's some new furniture, there's things for the new riders, there's more money for the employees. So she thought, you know, she'd spread that all around as well. But our ridership numbers are twenty-eight percent higher than last year and only five percent lower than pre-pandemic. And so we're seeing very busy afternoons and weekends. The parking shuttle carried four thousand four hundred seventy-nine passengers more this year compared to three thousand six hundred and twenty-nine in two thousand twenty-two. That's the parking shuttle, that's not everything. So there was quite an increase, as you can see, almost, well, not quite a thousand, but close to a thousand more passengers just on the shuttle.
That's great.
So, yeah.
Alright, any questions for Gregory? Thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, Cal Lake, Barry?
Evening.
Evening.
Thanks for giving me some slack in the last couple of meetings. When I wasn't here, I was on the conservancy. We had a meeting on September eighteenth and a quick run-through, our August two thousand twenty water monthly effort report, submitted with all bacterial samples were deducted and reported with no violations. Our residential lead and copper sampling for two thousand and three, twenty-three is now finished and those will be submitted to the Eagle by the end of October. Price decreases on our chlorine and ferric chloride, two of the chemicals we use there. That's good. We had a major repair on a twelve-inch street water main valve up by the America Inn. And that was a major problem. It started back in June, but because of the tourist season, we found a way to put a Band-Aid on it and get it done and coordinated with everybody on that. And that was a little more difficult than we anticipated, but that's done. And all the local businesses were contacted and coordinated with the personnel and everything, so that all worked out fine. Let's see. Interesting new thing that we're hearing about is with, again, the, with Eagle. In statewide, with all the marijuana growers, we're seeing more pesticides and things show up in the water system. And so there's going to be an outreach of that industry statewide. And of course, we do have some grow sites south of town here. So monitoring that very close to see if you get a spike on that. The two Sagatuck wells, which are out off of Maple Street, are out of service right now. Not a problem. We have, you know, four other wells that are providing that water, but ours are the oldest and we've got some work to do out there. All the way from some electronics stuff to bat infestation, right? So we're getting the bats on. Huntington Bank has changed their mailing address for people that pay by check. And you've got notices on your water bill about that. If you pay by check, it doesn't go to Detroit anymore. Goes to Illinois, Carroll Stream, Illinois. Apparently there are some people still pay by check.
I do, I do.
Well, it now goes to Carroll Stream, Illinois.
I did see that today.
Did see that, okay. So, let's see. Had a operations, a young man resign, or appetites for a new operations man, woman, whoever. Daryl's been talking to Douglas and the township, probably you too, about asset management plans. Keeping on top of that. Getting the new person over in Douglas, Lisa Moserini, is that how you say it? The new city manager. Getting her up to speed on what goes on at Cal Lake. And we just had our audit and our audit turned out okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Barry? Barry, thank you so much.
Barry.
Alright, next up is the harbor authority. So we finally met. I would just say it was a long meeting where we were just trying to figure out what exactly our goals are. I think there was a little bit of frustration within the group to say, you know, what are we trying to accomplish here? And I think by the end of it, we had decided that, you know, the three city managers, Douglas, the township and Sagatuck, we need them to get together to talk about how we're going to move forward with the authority. We don't have funding. We're just there to make recommendations. And, and a lot of the things kind of just bypass the harbor authority a lot of times. You know, dredging used to be the biggest thing that we talked about is dredging the harbor. But as you know, every now and again, we have flooded areas where we're like dealing with high water levels. Then several years go by and then we're dealing with low water levels. It's just one of those things that it's, it's the cyclical nature of our area. And so sometimes dredging, that can be a challenge to try to figure out what that looks like. Ryan, do you have anything more that you could add to that?
I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I, I know Gregory, you probably have some questions, but I can, I can wrap it up by saying, you know, as far as the navigation lights on the bridge, you know, it's back in Sagatuck's hands right now because we want to go over some things with our insurance company, our attorneys. And it's a lot more money than what we approved. We approved seven thousand dollars. Douglas approved seven thousand dollars. And now it's looking like it's going to be over thirty thousand dollars for this. So it might have to come back to council for us to approve a lot more money to deal with putting new navigation lights on the bridge.
You said it might have to come back to council. Is there any kind of timeline when that could come to council?
Yeah, Ryan?
No particular timeline.
No, just meeting with our insurance agency and with the attorneys to figure out, you know, making it, all the plans that are in place in case something ever happens. If a light goes out.
Oh, I understand.
God forbid, you know, somebody runs into the, the bridge. So he's working through that right now.
And also, you said thirty thousand. That, that's not on our, is that our obligation? Because I, I believe thirty thousand was the split between the three communities. Okay.
Yeah, so it would just be more money that we have to approve as a city council and Douglas's city council.
Okay.
At this point.
Correct. And then, to be clear, that was like a forty, forty, twenty split.
Oh, that's right. The township is going to contribute twenty percent.
Right. And thank you for answering that and remember my, remembering my question there.
Of course, and we talked about it at length at the harbor authority meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, one quick question. I pulled up the page on the city's website for the harbor authority. We probably ought to take a look at that.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Russ. Alrighty, on to zoning board of appeals?
Those DPA updates, this meeting, as you know, they do have one case for their October twelfth meeting, which is the AT&T.
Okay, historic district.
Yep, we meet on the fifth, March fifteenth.
Okay, planning commission, yes?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. We met last Thursday. We had a busy agenda. One of the items was an update from the chair of the short-term rental task force, Oliver Anderson. It sounds like they are moving towards, a report has actually been drafted. That was not presented at the meeting, but there was, it was discussed, that will be coming back to the planning commission on October nineteenth for further review and discussion. There's also discussion regarding how we're going to best present that with the council and the planning commission as well as perhaps, you know, presenting this to the public because it's, it's going to be of great interest to a lot of folks. A lot of great work being done on that and several people that have read it have given it very, I've not had a chance to read it in detail, but several people have read it and said it's very well done. Great work by the short-term rental task force. The two other items of discussion were the, we had the discussion regarding the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for restaurants with outdoor seating and expanded outdoor dining areas. That has been something that has been kind of a, it was in response to COVID when it was originally expanded and then it's just, it's, there's, there's not compliant properties and so forth that have kind of this. Anyway, it needs some work. The ordinance needs some work and we discussed some of the different things that we want to take a look at at the meeting on Thursday. So that'll be coming back to the planning commission, I think, probably, is it October? Are we going to be doing it in October?
Yeah, so a public hearing on that will occur on October nineteenth of the draft language.
Great, thank you. And then the other item was waterfront development, zoning ordinance reviews, zoning recommendations. We got some information from David Jurassic, planning, planning consultant. And the planning commission had a real good debate around different aspects of that and some questions he had for us in terms of what direction we'd like to see that go. We'll be looking at a public hearing on that in November and that would conduct the council in December is the likely. So that extension that, that council approved, to me, the only thing it was, was, was well timed because we did give a little bit of relief valve for the planning commission and planning consultant to be able to get to work there.
Any questions for Russ or Ryan?
Russ, you mentioned short-term rental, October nineteenth, that's when you're. Sorry? You, you mentioned October nineteenth. That was the, that was when you got. Uh, you, you mentioned October nineteenth. Um, that was the, that was when you guys were going to finally finalize your recommendation to council. Is that?
We, no, we will have the presentation of the report.
Presentation of the report.
Right. There very well may be some recommendation coming out of that to council.
When, when do you, when do you see recommendations coming to?
That's a question for, um, Ryan, actually.
Sorry.
Yeah. So actually, uh, the mayor, the, the planning mission chair and, and then, uh, Holly is the short-term rental task force chair, uh, and Ryan, we, we have a meeting scheduled this week to kind of discuss next steps and, um, you know, what we think the best approach will be as far as where we go from here with the recommendations and getting the recommendations out there and then kind of who is going to handle what parts as we go forward.
Yeah. And Gregory, just so you know, we, um, you know, when we had our meeting, um, it was the very last, um, short-term rental task force meeting. We approved, you know, basically, um, a, you have very lengthy report, um, about recommendations that over, you know, the several months that we've been meeting.
Hmm.
Um, and it, you know, the consultant, you know, made it all nice and pretty for all of us with a bunch of the recommendations and some specifics, but I would say there's a lot of broad, um, suggestions. Um, and then that's where it's going to get a little bit more into the nitty gritty when it comes to what the planning commission decides and what city council decides. But, um, as far as, you know, doing an overall presentation, um, hopefully by October nineteenth, um, the planning commission will see that first presentation.
That, that'll be the first presentation of the facts that have been gathered.
Yeah. I mean, everybody can still, it's public. So, um, people can, you know, read through it at this point.
But back to my question, do you have a guesstimate about when you think you might have recommendations to city council? Would it be by the end of this year?
Well, I, I think that.
Or you can't predict that.
Right. And so I, I think without knowing where the planning commissioners are at and, and what their recommendations may be and, you know, so the reason why I think we want to get the board chairs together is because some of these recommendations involve zoning matters. Some of these recommendations involve other parts of your city code.
Hmm.
Um, and, and some of them are really policy decisions that, that you'll have to make as well. So
Right.
Kind of discuss what's the best way to bring, you know, we're going to do two paths. Are we going to do one path here and then eventually end up here? So I think we want to kind of talk through that a little bit. Um, but, you know, any changes to your zoning ordinance, I mean, just, just looking at your timeline, I mean, planning commission would need to at least discuss. Language would have to be drafted. Then you schedule a public hearing and then even after the public hearing, if they're comfortable with making a recommendation, it comes back to the council. So you're looking at it probably, you know, early next year before you're to the point of making an actual decisions on something.
Sure. And I understand the complication and the time that it takes for the process. I hadn't asked that. What I'd asked was a, a guesstimation. So we wouldn't be knowing by the end of this year, you're, now you're guesstimating sometime early next year, right?
With the zoning related items.
Correct. Correct. Or any re- recommendations. Right.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Madam Mayor, it's really dependent on when the recommendations come through your task force.
Mm-hmm.
Depends on how quickly your planning commission acts. And then those recommendations come to city council. So there's no way to dictate that from a staff level. It really depends on how quickly your elected bodies can work. So that's a, it's a tough question for us as staff to answer.
Okay.
Uh, I would add too is that the, uh, the report is out. It's public, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's available. Do you want to read it? I would.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Just, yeah, so the pre- the, the task force had just a couple, you know, uh, last minute ads. So those are being added in and should be done or, you know, maybe the next day or so. I got, you know, looked at language today. So once we have that final report, we'll, we'll make sure that it, that it's, uh,
Okay.
Why have they available?
I'm not trying to seem like I'm rushing the process or anything. I just thought we could have an, a, a guesstimate, not a certain day or right that point, or maybe like around either the end of this year or like you said, the beginning of next year.
To your point, the original estimate should have had it here sooner than the end of the year. So.
Well, we were, I think the short-term rental task force was, you know, our last meeting, we needed to be done and the task force needed to be done with their work by the last meeting, September twenty-first. And so we did our job and it's now moving on to the next phase, which is planning commission.
Yeah, the planning commission has committed to have this on its agenda for its next meeting on the nineteenth.
Hmm.
And, um,
I'm just looking forward to seeing the recommendation.
Of course. And you, and, and you can read the whole report.
Right.
At this point.
Right.
With a few corrections that are still being worked out.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, the, the draft of the report, which is pretty much completely intact minus a couple of changes, you know, is, is in the short-term rental task force packet. So.
From September twenty-first, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Ryan. Thank you.
The last comment I would make is that, um, um, Holly Anderson made a comment that several task force members expressed disappointment that this project was ending.
Oh, yeah.
And they were excited about it. And I said, and, and, and you were there and, and I s- I said, did you put some applications in their hands? Were there other, do you have other board appointments?
I know.
So, so, uh, strike while the iron's hot, but I appreciate the work this group has done. So
All right.
Your comments like that tells us, tells me that it was.
Worthwhile.
Worthwhile for the folks involved.
Absolutely. All right, Ryan. Thank you. Uh, on to Parks and Public Works Committee.
Meet tomorrow morning.
All right. Thank you, Helen. Uh, Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail Study Committee.
Uh, things are going great. We, uh, continue to meet regularly, um, with C two A E, our engineers and, uh, beginning to interface with, uh, parks committees. So rolling on, no pun intended.
Yeah. Um, I, I forgot to ask any questions. Does anybody have any questions for Helen or Holly? Okay. All right. Uh, Tri-Community Recycling.
Yes. Household Hazardous Waste Day tomorrow. Uh, folks are still signing up. Um, we have close to two hundred people who've already signed up. So it's really good.
Wow.
Yep. It's, it's always a very popular event. Um, I did send a note out to the folks who'd signed up today and I asked the municipalities to help with this, uh, cause the chief reminded me that Maple Street is closed. You still can get, and I explained to folks, you still can get through there to get down to DPW to turn in. And that's the preferred way to come in because having folks exiting at Blue Star and then folks also trying to enter.
Okay.
Not, it won't, it'll just really be a mess. So we really need people to come in on Maple.
Where are you guys going to be set up back there?
This, when you come in, the, the dark trailer is already on the left-hand side. If you keep going past the gate, they set up the, uh, all their trucks on that big open side.
This side of the gate, on this side of their spot, on that open field?
Inside and inside, yeah. Between the two gates of DPW because there's that big open.
Just like last year, right?
Same as always.
I'm asking, cause I've got Farmer Elmer Hedley coming to drop off all the, uh, straw bales and corn stalks in that backfield tomorrow. And I don't want any conflict of interest. If I have to hold them off, I, I will.
Oh, yeah. Well, they'll probably, uh, the, uh, the household hazardous waste folks, ERG or, yeah, I think that's what it is. They usually get there, they're set up and ready to go not long after two o'clock. So.
Okay. He'll be in early in the morning.
That would be good.
Okay.
All right.
Cody, would you like to, could you step up and address this?
Uh-oh. The farmer or the?
So we're, everything is set up and kind of like our backyard of DPW.
Right.
We have our street waste dumpster. Right after that is the trailer for the hazardous waste.
Uh-huh.
Um, so that whole backfield is still open.
Okay.
Still plenty of room between the gate.
Where we usually drop them off. Okay.
So there should be no issue with the farmer getting in there.
Thank you, Cody. I don't want to upset the farmer.
Yeah. Just, just again, I know we've said this the last couple of meetings, but really appreciative of all the support and help that we've gotten. Uh, the fire department's been fantastic with, um, the signs. The chief sends me a note every time a new sign goes up, uh, which is wonderful. So I, I really appreciate their help. Cal Lake Sewer Water Authority with the ads in the papers is fantastic. Uh, it's really, they're very nice, classy and they look good. And then both cities, uh, city of Sagatuck, city of Douglas and the township, their financial support. And then of course Rotary, um, the ten thousand dollars plus the banner at the pallet sign. Um, and other than that, uh, the crew looks forward to council approving the recycling bid. They're really excited about that. I've run into a couple of them in the last, yeah, very excited. That's finally coming to fruition.
Okay. Any questions for Garn? All right. Uh, request for payment none. Uh, approval of accounts payable. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of three million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty cents.
Second, Leo.
All right. And if I could have a roll call on that one. Oh, do you want to add to that, Russ?
I would just add, that's the largest council payable to, to Sagatuck I've ever made a motion for. Two point nine one one million of that is past due taxes, which is about ninety-three point four percent of total. So for those that think that we're spending money left and right.
On through.
Except for those that haven't paid yet.
Right. Right. All right, Sarah.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. And on to introduction of ordinances, none, unfinished business, none at this time. And we are down to new business. Um, fifteen A asset water management. That will be on page twenty-four of your packet if you guys want to turn to that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would, uh, go ahead and like to make a motion. This was well explained to us through, um, our, um, engineer and, uh, and it's something that, uh, we need to move forward with. The sooner the better as we look forward to our replacing our sewer systems and finding out what we're responsible for and what we're not responsible for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm happy to make the motion to approve the draft waters asset management plan as provided by Baker Tilling.
Second.
All right. Motion by Muncie, second by Baldwin. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, just, Madam Mayor, for a time, I, I would ask if we could get a, uh, maybe an idea of when things will come back with this? Cause there's some pretty critical items here in terms of notifications for community regarding the potential costs that may be incurred. Uh, there's a lot of, um, different items here that I think would, would probably benefit from some communication pushouts for people so they can kind of understand where we're going with this. I think it's very proactive. Um, and, uh, just an opportunity, I think, for us to, to continue to demonstrate that we want to get as much, as much information out to people in ways that they can understand because it's going to have a big impact. Madam Mayor, happy to follow up with the time line on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? All right. If the clerk could call the rule.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. And now on to fifteen B, the AT&T the lease first review, um, the AT&T lease and its first review. If we could go to page fifty-seven on that.
And there.
Yes, dear.
Move to allow staff and consultants to continue lease negotiations with AT&T to provide cellular service at the Mount Bald Head Radome site, conditioned on zoning board of appeals, ZBA approval and all other local, state and federally required conditions.
Second, Leo.
All right. Motion by Lewis, second by Leo. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I was a little bit confused about this. Um, and we had talked about this and thought that even maybe entertain the idea of having a special meeting about it as well. Even the mayor said that, you know, he would entertain the idea of a special meeting about this. Now, we have already been, um, consulting, uh, to, and with our lease negotiations with AT&T and, uh, to provide cellular services here. Uh, and, um, and now what I'm under, what, what exactly are we approving? That, that, uh, will we, will we see the final lease before it's approved? I mean, what are we approving and why is it, why do we need to have a motion for something we've already been working on?
Okay.
Well, I, I don't know if I can necessarily answer the question as to why we need to have a motion, um, to approve. Continuing working on the lease, I guess since, um, the lease was discussed at the last work session, our office has been in continued discussions with AT&T.
Uh-huh.
Um, we're continuing to work on those revisions. Uh, and we understand in, in talking to AT&T's council, um, we understand that they're putting together, uh, information that's relevant to rental data and they're going to send that over. Um, and then our office has also been contacting cell tower consultants to get an independent review um, of both rental values and the lease itself. And I apologize for the late notice in bringing this up. We have kind of just been hearing from them now.
And we, we talked about wanting to have more talk about this, yes, at the last workshop.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, this is Mr. Jacob Witty with our, our legal firm.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. So, so again, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for the, the late notice and this is kind of, um, jumping on the lease here. Uh, but we did hear back, basically today, we've reached out to six different, um, cell tower consultants for the purpose of providing assistance with this lease. Two of them have replied to us. Um, and I can discuss those two with you. The four, either they have not yet gotten back to us or they want a copy of the lease and we haven't sent that yet. And so what we would like to do, um, uh, is kind of present this to council at this time and see if either we have enough information to choose to work with one of these consultants to keep us moving along or get authorization to continue working with the other four consultants and come back with six bids. Um, at this time, the first consultant that we contacted is David Espinosa at Tower Leases. Um, and he would charge a fifteen hundred dollar flat fee. Uh, and his experience covers, uh, he, he's worked on over four thousand leases. Um, and has worked with between two and three thousand law firms on similar projects. Uh, all the consultants, including David Espinosa at Tower Leases, their review would include both the entirety of the lease uh, and all of its provisions as well as specific information concerning rental values. Um, David Espinosa, his, uh, I think one of the big selling points for him is that he could do a turnaround in approximately two to three business days. So if the council really wants to stay on top of this, that's something where he could turn it around. Possibly before the end of the week if we give him the lease tomorrow. The other quote we got was from Ken Schmidt at Steel in the Air. Uh, he would charge a four thousand dollar flat fee. Uh, he has experience with over four thousand different clients and has reviewed over ten thousand different leases. Um, and he also has a law degree. Um, and in talking with him, uh, he, he, he indicated that he would be able to provide fifteen to twenty pages of analysis on the substantive lease terms as well as rental value rates. Um, that his turnaround would be one to two weeks from the time we engage him. And then there's also um, four other consultants that we attempted to contact and either they haven't gotten back with us yet. Um, or they want a copy of the lease and we haven't provided that to them at this point. So what we're looking for, um, is either if the council is comfortable going with one of those consultants now, uh, to get the ball rolling on that so we can move this along. Uh, if the council wants us to, to authorize our office to send out the lease to the other four consultants we're trying to get quotes from and come back with additional quotes, we can do that as well.
So, okay. So can you tell me when you started contacting these folks? I mean, you said they were just getting back with you. You, you just recently started contacting them?
I believe it was after the, the work session.
For the last few days. That's why maybe you haven't heard from everybody right away. Okay. And then, um, and then also, um, so th- this is allowing us to find a consultant and to pay a consultant, uh, to go over the lease and to make sure that, uh, it's a viable lease.
Yeah. Well, it, it's, it's both the substantive lease terms and then a lot.
And the value.
And, and rental value. So, you know, our office, we, we were able to locate some rental value, but the amount of data that we can provide is, is not going to be anything close to what either of these consultants can provide.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you want to add to that?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, if you, if you recall the workshop discussion, um, staff along with their attorneys had done some research. We provided you with a slate of costs throughout the state of Michigan. Um, the direction from council was perhaps look at an outside consultant to hire to do a larger analysis. And so based on Wednesday's discussion, uh, you know, the firm did some quick footwork to bring back some costs. To answer Mr. Muncie's question, why is it, why is the motion written the way it is? This, so we have spending authority concerns. And so we didn't know what the cost were going to come in at. So we just wanted to make sure this got in front of council. Um, if it exceeded my spending authority, I would need permission. Doesn't look like any of the costs do. So we're just going to continue with the due diligence if that's what the council is com- comfortable with. And we can certainly have a, a, a special meeting if, if that's what you all would like to, like to do, like to do on this one.
So then just to clarify, if we approve what's in front of us tonight, we can still have a special um, meeting about, especially with all the costs that might be obviously coming forward with all of this.
On this one, I, I would recommend that because you, yeah, you have a number of items and this is a big project. As I think, um.
Thank you.
Yeah. And nothing in this motion is, um, wrong at this point. We can still, you know, have a special meeting without saying that in the motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, um, so on that, thank you very much for the information. I, I would not be prepared to even approve any of those until we see more information. I'd like to see some representative work product from them and see what we get. The four thousand dollar project may be the one that's more attractive based on the information that they can return based on the two to three day turnaround. That would just be, and then wait for the other four if they even respond. I would suggest that would be coming up in the next workshop for us to see those to say that's the direction we want to go. Cause I think.
Because I think for the people that weren't at the workshop, the, the, the idea here was that we had been presented with information regarding what I'm going to call comps. And the comps for other communities that have similar structures and similar agreements were a range of different amounts for leases. And I don't remember who brought it up first, but said, is there someone that could maybe look at this independently that has experience with it across the country? And say, here's some examples of other similar types of agreements because that may give us an objective third-party opinion on this. Because my concern is that if this goes through and everything is signed, sealed, and delivered, someone's going to come back and say, why didn't you ask for this amount? Well, that's where this report will come in for our benefit, is to say we did have an independent review of this. I think that's the benefit of it.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, I think we're talking about two separate things. And so this is exactly why this motion is in front of you right now. So either we get the, all the proposals from the outside consultants and bring them back to you, and you all can discuss that. Or you can allow staff to pick one of those consultants within our spending authority, and then start doing the work. And so at your next, the work meeting, let them provide their review. And then at your next meeting, then we can have a discussion with the results. So there's either a one-step process or a two-step process.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yes.
And as I recall, this was our, our due diligence in making sure that we move this project along because we all recognize how important this is to our constituents. They've made it very clear in the last two years that we've done a community-wide survey that this is an important issue as far as having that kind of connectivity. And this is the first step towards that. So with that, I'd like to call a question.
One more, one more comment.
One more comment is, this is an incredibly important project, and, and I agree that, you know, this should continue to move forward. However, haste is not the best way to approach this. This is an incredibly complex project, and it's an asset that, I think we would all agree, needs to be thought, thought, thoughtfully approached. And this is not a done deal. I mean, there's still a lot of details that need to be worked out here. And I think the public deserves a chance to kind of cure some of the things that we're exploring on this project as well. So I, I would say that it's just continues to be important for us to, there's not a rush in this regard. There's some things, there's a ZBA that has to be met, and has to talk about their variance requests, as well as there's some other things that have to be addressed with this. So I'm for forward motion, but with due diligence.
All right, as far as the motion in front of us, if we could take a roll call on it?
Baldwin? Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, let's be clear in the motion there. That was to allow staff to hire a consultant to bring back costs and present them to you in a future meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, on to 15C, Hardscaping, Heavy Landscaping in the Right-of-Way Policy. This would be page 58.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve staff and legal drafting proposed ordinance amendments and a formal policy regarding uses in the right of way that are consistent with the city attorney's report.
Second.
All right, motion by Lewis, second by Baldwin. Any discussion?
Just more of a procedural question, and it kind of relates back to the previous agenda item as well, is that when we have a committee of the whole meeting, the workshop, I kind of view that as being when Congress has a committee and they discuss a bill. The bill is reported out to the authority or out to legislative authority. Work is being done on this, but it's not yet ready for action. And I, so I kind of struggle with, we've already given the city management and administration the authority to move forward with getting things together. The motion seems a little premature to me in these situations because action is already underway. I've just, it's more of a procedural question. You know, things coming out of committee to agendas are then.
It's a fair question. So, I mean, oftentimes councils just want to kill something, meaning like, we don't, we're not even interested in this, and that gives staff direction. So that's exactly what's happening with this motion. Do you want to do this and/or not?
Okay, anyone else on this? I was just under the impression that, you know, having our city attorney go through this policy. So, you know, when it comes to having things in the right of way, you know, having the ability to apply, to have, you know, permission to have things in the right of way, and that being able to come to us and say, hey, Cody, is this going to be in the way of the snowplow? You know, being able to have those discussions, and I feel like that's what this is doing. Am I correct in that?
Right now, it's forgiveness, not permission.
Right, it's forgive, right, where people have just kind of done their own thing. And now this is our way of saying, hey, you have to have permission to do this. And, you know, we're going to allow it or we're not going to allow it. And then we, you know, get to have, you know, input from city staff on it. Ryan, is there more that you want to go into on that?
I think you're spot on in the final policy, and then any ordinance changes will be back before you for a final decision.
All right. So I guess the clerk can call the roll on that.
Baldwin? Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, on to 15D, Recycling Cans in the Park. This will be page 67.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to allow city staff to begin a pilot project to collect recyclables in public spaces and purchase recycling receptacles along with new trash receptacles. Second, Leo.
All right, motion by Lewis, second by Leo. Any discussion on this? Go ahead, Gregory.
Mayor, when we were presented with this, I think it's a great idea. In fact, I talked about that at the workshop, how many times over the years, you know, folks would come through town, where do I put my cans? Where do I put my bottles? You know, and because they're so used to other places where you've got different receptacles. And we saw the example of receptacles here that were provided. And I think even Ryan agreed with us as well that we didn't think they were really that aesthetically pleasing. And he said ideally, they would look a lot different. We're proposing something right now, and we've got pictures in front of us. I'm wondering if this is quite complete to pass yet until we see what the containers are going to look like for sure, or?
Madam Mayor, so this, so good news, Mr. Muncie. This does have to go through the historic district.
Right, I know, I understand that, yeah.
So it's a matter, do you, do you want this to come back in front of you? Or do you trust your staff and/or the Historic District Commission to handle this?
I trust our staff and our Historic District Commission.
I certainly do trust our staff.
But that's a question for council.
Yes.
Do you want to?
It's my question, just not question our staff.
Yeah, or do you want it to come back with a bunch of different options?
I trust John Canarsa and Tim Straker to pick out a recycling can better than anybody in this room.
That's probably true. That's probably true. Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you. So kind of along those lines, I'm full supporter of this. This is, this is absolutely great. I love to see it. Pilot projects in my mind are pilots only, and information should be thought about in terms of what does success look like? What types of metrics are going to be used? What type of measurements of success? And what's the time period going to be for the pilot project? And I'm looking at.
I think that the, the metrics are going to be, so DPW has agreed to separate these. And so we want to see how, how successful they are in pulling that off. And they have no question right now about it being anything other than smooth sailing, but we're going to start small and move from there. But that's, it's going to be, do we have any pushback from basically DPW? Are, are, you know, the cans getting into by rope, you know, critters and whatnot? So it's going to be, that would be, we want to make sure we've got the right cans in place, and that we've got the right distribution in place.
Yeah, excellent. And, and data will speak volumes about the success of the pilot. I would also encourage us to think about what that pilot project extension or what that timeframe is going to be, you know, when a measurement starts and when it stops. Also too, and to follow up on council member Muncie's comments, where exactly and how many of these receptacles are going to be purchased in place?
There's going to be three sets for the pilot project, and we're looking at probably, one will go at Mount Bald Head, one at Wick's, and then I forget where the other one is going to be, like the Cofflin, yeah.
Good, good.
Yeah, and I just, real quick, we'd also talked about signage. The ones that we're seeing here, it's very kind of difficult to see bottles, cans here. If you noticed in our packet, you know, the examples that we're giving kind of looks like Darth Vader in R2-Doom.
Madam Mayor. So we're not.
But so I'm just asking for better signage, at least.
Agreed. Yeah, we're not married to these particular cans. So we're going to, after we work with the historic group.
Yeah.
We're going to have the best recycling bins ever.
If I may.
Yes, please.
I ran into Kelly Roach this evening down at the soccer match when I was working the ticket booth. And she's very passionate about this.
Okay.
And you could pretty well expect that Kelly will have a full-on study of what is working and what is not. She has been very passionate about this for many years, so she is excited.
All right, well, if, this is, let's see, it is a roll call.
Baldwin? Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, on to 15E, the ZBA Appointment, page 71.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Nicholas Barna to the zoning board of appeals alternate member set with a term, seat with a term ending July 1, 2026. Second, Leo.
All right, motion by Lewis, second by Leo. Anybody, any discussion? Okay, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Just want to thank him for wanting to be a part of that. It's really hard to get people to be on these boards, so we appreciate Mr. Barna's willingness to be a part of that. Let's see, let's go on to 15F, Special Event Application for the Homecoming Parade. That's on page 73.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Special Event Application for Sagetuck High School Homecoming Parade to be held on October 20, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion by Muncie, second by Gardner. Any, any discussion? All right, all those in favors, say aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye or yes, yes? Anybody opposed? All right, on to 15G, Special Event Application for the Turkey Trot. That's on page 79.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Special Event Application for the Turkey Trot to be held on November the 18th, 2023. Second, Leo.
All right, motion by Lewis, second by Leo. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, before Tim, there was discussion at the workshop about whether the race was going to be out in the streets or the sidewalk. And I know there was some, there was going to be some discussion post the meeting, so I just wanted to see.
The plan is for it to be on the street, and we can work out the, you know, the race marshals with the public safety meetings.
So.
If it was included here, request for street closures to run on the road.
So should we make a conditional apply?
Right.
That always is. It's always conditional upon the approval from the safety.
Do you know, do we need to include that in the motion?
The motion would have to.
That's what, Mr. Gardner is requesting that you do.
Yeah, I would suggest we do that.
Okay, Garn, would you like to update your motion?
Motion to approve the Special Event Application for the Turkey Trot to be held on November the 18th, 2023, conditional upon security meeting. And staff approval. And staff approval. Thank you. I'm writing and talking.
That would be Leo.
Leo.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. That's a voice vote. Again, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Great. Now on to public comments on anything besides what was on the agenda? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom, Sarah? Okay, correspondence. I don't believe we have any correspondence. So I guess it's on to council comments. Helen, would you like to start?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Gregory?
Let's see, what can I think of? Well, I'll be fall decorating. The farmer's dropping everything off tomorrow. Sorry to say that probably the glitter will probably have to wait until Thursday. We've got rain the next couple of days, so I'll be making bows and, and all that. We were able to raise enough money to buy the hay bales and the corn stalks. We're still working on getting pumpkins, but the town should be decorated by this weekend.
And Gregory, if anybody wants to make donations, they reach out to.
They can reach out to Sadaba. They can reach out to Pudding Stone, Josie there at Pudding Stone. And they can make a small donation if they'd like to. We just need a little bit more just to make sure we have enough pumpkins and glitter. So I would love to have that if you guys can. So you'll see me out in the street and all that. Do you know when they'll be taking the banner down for the recycling? That'll be.
It should be. We're done.
Right after the 26th, okay. And so I'll be out and about, so slow down if you see me.
So do you want donations of pumpkin or glitter?
Pumpkins or glitter donations would be great, too.
Let's be clear with that, right?
All right, Holly, do you have any comments?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Russ?
No comments but a question. We do have attorney opinions from the workshop that we were told to hang on to and return to the clerk.
Okay.
Do they need to be returned?
Yes, they do.
Yes. Great, thank you for bringing those in. Garn?
All good.
All right.
Rain or shine tomorrow.
Sounds, sounds good. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you, everyone. That was supposed to be one. Sorry.
Farmer Jeff.